This stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Gorski, we have a roll call.
I didn't think to call, because I changed my mind to call.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman. Ms. DeMayo.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mrs. Cole Poniewich.
Here.
Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Mrs. Carino.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted April 22, 2016, at all schools, the Home News Tribune, the Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. And now we can have our student board members report.
Okay, so the first thing I have is, earlier in the month, a bunch of students went on their youthing, went to the Youth and Government New Jersey Conference. This year Monroe did really well. We won the premier delegation award, which is awarded to the delegation that submits all their assignments on time and overall just acts well during the conference. A lot of students got their bills passed at the conference. We even had one student win an award for having outstandingly written legislation, and we had one group, one courts group, that won Outstanding Brief. And a lot of students also were nominated for the Kona Summer Internship Program, which is affiliated with Youth and Government. There's a DECA conference going on this week, which is what Nick is at, and he said he would speak more about it at the next meeting when he's back. High school students are gearing up for AP exams in the next two weeks, and those are going to be held for the next two weeks in the high school in the morning and afternoon. Girls and boys state delegates have been chosen in the high school. It's a summer program that encourages civic engagement, and it's held at Rider University. And if you want to read about that, it's in the high school's College and Career Counseling Center's main newsletter. And the last thing I have is that the Drama Club Spring Musical has its opening show tomorrow right here in the high school, so I think you should all go, try to go to that. That concludes the report.
Thank you very much. Now we have our water testing presentation by Dr. Richard Lynch, and I'd like to thank Mr. Lynch for coming here personally to present his findings.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education. It's been my sincere pleasure to support the mission of this district over the years with your air quality and water quality related issues, and it's a pleasure to be able to present this to you this evening. As everyone is aware, the Flint, Michigan crisis sort of got people very interested recently in the quality of water, and shortly thereafter, a district in northern Jersey found that they had some pretty severe water contamination problems with respect to lead. Once that was determined to be the case, the Monroe Township Board of Education decided to do a screening for water quality here within the district. And in mid-March, the Monroe Township Utilities Department arranged for some samples to be collected from sort of random places throughout all of the schools. And the board also authorized my firm, Environmental Safety Management Corporation, to also collect samples throughout the district. The Utilities Authority results came back largely, no lead detected in any of the samples. The action limit, the New Jersey and federal action limit for lead in water is 15 parts per billion, and the great majority of the samples that they collected were far below that or non-detectable. They found one sample that was above it, and that was actually labeled to be in a faculty room over at Applegarth. Unaware of those results, because those results weren't available, we also collected samples throughout the district. Our plan was to collect samples, not sort of randomly, but more in accordance with the EPA protocol for lead sampling. And our sampling included sort of the closest place where the water was coming into the building initially, as well as in the kitchens where food preparation is occurring, the sink that is used for food preparation. And we chose to also sample the most commonly used water fountains in the schools as sort of our standardized sampling approach. None of the drinking water samples or kitchen samples came back with any elevations above the action limit for lead. In three of the schools, the old boiler room utility sinks that hadn't been changed since who knows when, our initial, a couple of our samples showed some slight elevations just above the action limit, but those did not represent any risk to lead exposure, because those are not used for consumption by students. They're used by custodians and maintenance persons for, you know, utility use. They presented no risk. We presented those results to the district, and as a matter of caution, the Facilities Department arranged to have those fixtures in those older utility areas replaced, which is certainly a good precaution. No risk there. We then, another thing that the Facilities Department did was they replaced the faucet in the Applegarth faculty room, which had been labeled as showing high levels of lead. I examined that faucet, and it was my opinion that that was very likely a labeling error made on the part of the Utility Department. What we actually think is that they mislabeled that sample for the sample collected from the abandoned wood shop utility sink that they also collected in Applegarth, which probably hasn't been used in years. And any water, the first draw sample that would have been pulled out of there would have been sitting in those pipes for literally years. And so that kind of explained the higher-than-expected result in that location. We made a recommendation that that sink, so we went back and sampled that sink and in fact found that that sink had higher levels. We made a recommendation that that sink be taken out of service until such time that those old faucets can also be replaced. And they're a special order, so they'll be, I know that they're being replaced. I'm not sure if that's occurred yet, because they're kind of hard to get. So in summary, the water quality in the Monroe Township schools, from all indications, is excellent. It's my professional opinion that there's no risk for elevated lead in the water from fountains, from kitchen sinks, and even coming into the building, and even in utility rooms. Anyone who would drink from a utility sink, I wonder who that would be. But we've gone ahead and changed those anyway. So that's my report. I see no risk for elevated lead levels, and I'd like to open it up to any questions that you may have.
Dr. Lynch, that's very comforting to hear. You know, safety for the students and the staff is paramount in this district, and I think on behalf of the board, we're all glad we contracted you to do this, and especially to get the results we're getting. I am going to open the floor up for questions or comments from the board, and then the public. So would anybody on the board like to have a question? Mr. Nostine?
Thank you very much for your report. I just have some questions. Is there any type of a PM that's required or that you would recommend with your expertise going forward to maybe flush, you know, the water system periodically, or put that on the maintenance PM schedule for yearly or whatever basis?
Thanks for the question. There's some general guidelines that people suggest that schools follow, just as you would follow in your home. The main recommendation that the EPA makes is, you know, after water has been sitting, you know, for six or eight hours, that first flush, you might want to let it run for 15 to 30 seconds until it gets cold. What that does is that flushes any of the sediment that may have sort of leached out of the pipes into the water and goes down the drain before you actually would put a glass under it to drink. That recommendation is one that they also make for schools. There's not a broad-based recommendation for sort of any periodic flushing or, you know, equipment that requires filtration, unless you decide that you want to take extra steps, or if there's reason to do so. But the main recommendation that the EPA recommends is an initial flush. And of course, they also always recommend that you never, and this is true of your home as well, and having been involved in a lot of cases where you have hot water heater failures and things, I will reiterate the recommendation. You never, ever, ever, ever cook with hot water. Because the sediment that accumulates inside of hot water heaters, and the chemistry that happens because of the heat, causes metals to leak, to leach out of the metal container, and it sort of settles in the bottom of those containers. You get a lot of sediment and lots of metals from hot water sources. So as a rule, you always cook and drink or consume from the cold water side, even if you have to heat the water up. You don't get a head start by starting with hot water. But broadly, I would say the same precautions that you would take at home, especially here in a district like Monroe. Your infrastructure's not that old. You know, your water, I reviewed the Monroe Township Utility Department's annual water testing reports. Your water actually comes from aquifers that are sort of groundwater aquifers, and 10% of it comes from American water. You don't have old pipes that you would expect to see the kinds of problems that we saw in North Jersey, or even in Flint, Michigan. So normal precautions would apply.
Is there any recommendation for periodic testing every five years, every 10 years? What would your expert?
There's no rule. The rule is that the Utility Department has to test water on a periodic basis, and it depends, and that frequency depends on the kinds of results that they're getting. Here in Monroe Township, they are, because of the excellent history of results that they've collected over the years, they are on a three-year testing cycle at what they call Tier One locations throughout the district. And those would be the older properties. And they have, their last report actually was dated in 2013, and they're coming up on their next cycle of three-year tests. That's to make sure that the water that they deliver is clean. And I reviewed their test results, and they're great. So, you know, districts, you know, I would say that districts that are in higher sort of risk areas might take on a program of more periodic testing. But what I would recommend is that if there are observations, odors, discolored water, or other things that would make you suspect that there may be a problem, let facilities know about it, and facilities can kind of arrange to make sure that that's evaluated. And I think that that's a reasonable approach.
Okay, thank you. If you see something, say something, in other words.
Yes, that's familiar.
Anyone else from the board? Ms. Arminio?
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. My question is, did you test for anything else other than lead?
We did not.
So it was just, that's what you were looking for?
Yeah, we were specifically looking, we were specifically looking for lead. Some districts, and this sort of goes back to the answer to the previous question, we've seen in some districts where they have brown water, like sometimes you'll get brown water coming out of a faucet. And that's the kind of thing that can make people concerned. It might be the kind of thing that would suggest asking a question. Sometimes you get brown water because the municipality is flushing hydrants, and they're disturbing the biofilm and other sediment that may be in the pipes. Sometimes you get brown water because you actually get leaching of iron, which is not a primary water contaminant, meaning it doesn't have health effects associated with it, but it has aesthetic effects. When we see that, we'll test for lead, but we'll also test for iron and a couple of other things, maybe even manganese, because those are typically associated with discolored water. In this case, given the results that were available from the Utility Department that indicated that, you know, the levels of microorganisms that they're sending to us are fine, and all of the other sort of primary constituents, given the current concerns, we focused on lead.
Has the EPA raised the levels, though, recently for lead consumption? I know sometimes they change what is acceptable or not.
Well, they've not changed, they've not changed the levels for lead consumption, but over, since I was working on my doctorate degree, I've seen that they've lowered the recommendation for blood lead levels in children that would suggest follow-up evaluations from their physician, down to 10 micrograms per deciliter of blood. That level has lowered maybe over the last decade or so.
That's an improvement.
Yeah, that's
It's the opposite that concerns me. Sometimes when they raise a level of concentration.
Yeah, they say it's no longer as problematic as we used to think.
Right.
That happens in a lot of regulatory settings. The action limit, but the action limit for lead, as far as I can recall, has not been, still 15 parts per billion.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Rutske?
Hi. So if I understood correctly, 15 parts per million?
Billion.
Billion.
15 parts per billion. That's a lot more. So that's the area of concern. Is there an average number you could say that we, our scores came in at? So we know how close we were, or how far away we are?
Most of yours were less than three. Non-detectable.
Gotcha.
Non-detectable. On some of the utility sinks, we were getting, we got some numbers that were in the neighborhood of five or so, five to six. You know, on initial, on the initial draw sample, but then on the flush, it went away. In other districts, and it depends on where you are in the state and sort of where the water comes from, and how corrosive the water is, it's common. I've seen, commonly, I see levels in buildings that don't have a problem of even five. Not just the first draw, but even the flush samples. So here, your data, your data looked great.
Thank you very much.
Any other board member have a question? I'll open the floor up to the public. Just remind anyone from the public wishing to make a comment or ask a question, that you have three minutes to do so, and if you come up, just state your name and address. Anyone from the public wishing to ask a question? Not seeing anyone? We can move on. A short time ago, we asked Dr. Koch to update
Thank you, Dr. Lynch.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Lynch. We asked Dr. Koch to update our strategic plan, and I know he's ready to do so right now. I'll turn it over to
Thank you, Mr. President, the Board of Education. I was tasked with providing an update to the Monroe Township Strategic Plan, which spans a period of five years. And the nice thing about Google Docs is we work with our leadership team, and we each took different sections and looked at it as a team, and we worked on it together, and I'm going to go through the results for everyone right now. So there are five goals. The five goals, first one is curriculum and instruction, the second one is community engagement/business partnerships, the third is finance and facilities, technology and the arts is the fourth, and communications is the fifth. Within each goal, there are activities, and what you see across the chart is basically an action plan. So you see the staff, the resources, the constraints, the timelines, and indicators of success. The very last column on your right, the status update, April 2016, is what the annual progress is for this year. So the first area is to, was to audit current curriculum documents to determine updates as required. This is curriculum documents. The audit for the school year 1516 has been completed. All documents up for revision have been identified and will be revised during the summer. And the curriculum office will be implementing the Atlas Curriculum Mapping System beginning in the summer of 2016, which will make tracking all the curricula and revisions so much easier, so much better. Second area, to provide teachers with a shared file for each curriculum to enable sharing of best practices. Shared files for content areas are present in Google Drive. They're created collaboratively with teachers. They're shared during professional development session and collaborative planning meetings. And materials and resources reviewed are reviewed on an ongoing basis by content supervisors and building leadership. The next activity is requiring lesson plans to include evidence of use of available technology to improve learning and differentiation of instruction. That's done. I mean, as you can see in the column there, the lesson plans are collected. They're done online. Certainly, having the one-to-one initiative at the high school certainly helps that. We use Google Apps for Education also, and trainings are provided through the 15 and 16 school year. Standards-based report card, which our curriculum committee just heard about tonight, is included, and trainings also for K to 3 teachers. Our park assessment samples are distributed to all staff, and they are aligned to the Common Core, well, to the Common Core. And our year-long PD courses are aligned to the Common Core and Core Curriculum Standards. The next section is to provide teachers and administrators with ongoing professional development on the Common Core standards. All the staff from K to 12 receive ongoing professional development to facilitate infusion of mandated next-generation science standards, and the STEM, which is the Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math, and STEAM, which includes the Arts Initiative District-wide. Second objective with that is to integrate character education pre-K to 12 to develop positive personal growth at school, at home, and in the community at large. First activity was to develop and implement a program to recognize students who demonstrate good character and make responsible choices in personal behavior. Our ongoing character education programs are conducted in all the schools, including Week of Respect, assemblies, classroom lessons, Challenge Day, Rachel's Challenge, Random Acts of Kindness. Programs are at the schools. We have senior awards. We have self-assessment grades. And one student at each grade level is recognized by the Monroe Township Human Relations Commission with a character award. Second activity of that objective was to develop a character education program that teaches basic social behaviors that are developmentally appropriate and are reinforced systematically. Every school has a comprehensive HIB training, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying. They have that training program for staff. The students are informed via lessons and programs through our school-wide character education programs, which are implemented and provided throughout the year. The next activity was solicit parental expectations regarding the development of character education. Parents are solicited and actively involved via school committees, orientations, and programs, and the parents are aware of the HIB process. In the second to the right column, you see a lot of the ways that this is accomplished. Our school's school goals committees, school safety teams, parent organizations, back-to-school nights, parent assemblies. So you can look at both columns for evidence of how these goals and objectives are being completed. And lastly, in this section, communicate effectively, or yeah, effectively behavioral expectations for students to parents and community members, excuse me. Parents are made via a signed code of conduct, which is done for every school, and the availability of such on every school website. Part of the character education program, provide appropriate opportunities to bring community members and parents into the school as volunteers, as role models. We have, actually in the spring, the Mayor and the Town Council Awards for Good Character. The police and doctors visit the school. We have senior citizen rave readers. We have Read Across America, which just recently occurred. We had board members, we had the mayor, members of the community, different parents coming in. We have multicultural assemblies, celebrations, and also career days. Takes us to number, to goal number two, which is community engagement and business partnership. First activity was to convene a committee to work and collaborate on identifying community resources, create a guide to assist in working with local businesses enabling identification, of friends of the district who would be willing to provide opportunities such as career internships, financial resources, or other experiences. The resource guide was completed and is available. The guide will be updated annually. The high school students are placed in a work-study, which are paid and non-paid internships. They have job shadowing. There are structured learning experiences and community service through our senior option program. And in the column, I won't read through the whole column, but if you look right to the left of that, it really goes into much more detail of the different resources that are available. The next section was to develop mechanisms to create symbiotic relationships between businesses in the district that would encourage and support their involvement in educational programs, providing scholarships, and support for other student entrepreneurial endeavors. Students have provided scholarships from local businesses and organizations. Students have created signs, actually today, the mayor visited the high school, and I was there, and our graphics art department, Dr. Iwicke?
Yes.
Created a sign for the Historical Society, which will be placed with, and it's a replica, will be placed with the one-school or one-room schoolhouse in town. So it's pretty exciting. They are involved in the community with that. And internships are provided by the local businesses and organizations for our students. We're currently investigating strategies for engaging our alumni to create networks for our students, highlighting their successes and possibly supporting the students through scholarships. So we want to build the alumni network and get them, get the, you know, prior students to get involved and either offer technical expertise in their careers or, you know, possible financial incentives for the students. Next area was to continue to strengthen relationships with established partners such as Monroe Township Public Library, the Shade Tree Commission, and the Monroe Township Environmental Commission. The Township Enviro Mobile and the Township Firehouse trailer visit schools and provide instructions to elementary students. The Monroe Township Library collaborates with several elementary schools in database instruction and library nights. And our Monroe Township Library also offers consulting services as it relates to literature recommendations for special projects and summer reading programs. We also have collaborations with the annual Arbor Day celebration, Sustainable New Jersey Grant, which we received two this year, our Township Green Fair, School Gardens, Enviro Mobile, sorry, and our Rutgers University Summer Institute for Scientific Research. Goal number three, finance and facilities. And after this presentation, you'll hear a very good report from Mr. Gorski on our finances and our budget. The first major activity was to identify the scope and the specifics of information needed to be conveyed, fixed costs, cost comparisons, cost drivers, categorical spending, tax rate analysis, and additions/deletions to the budget. The district has produced a budget that is near final approval, which will happen hopefully tonight, which has received more public accolades and has been recognized by the county for many best practices, unlike any time in the last decade. Planning and the successful efforts of the business administrator to create efficiencies was largely responsible for the unique creation of a surplus which supplanted the need to raise taxes by $600,000. The next section is to develop an annual budget calendar to ensure transparency, convene an annual budget steering committee in September of each year of the representative stakeholders. The budget calendar is complete and was largely in part responsible for the increased public interest in the budget process. New this year was a portal to immediately answer the public's questions about the budget. And lastly, in this area, to determine what media to use for communicating financial information. We do that through our website, our public presentation committee, and committee presentations. Next area was to, or was to, conduct an assessment to establish priorities for maintenance and upkeep to both buildings and grounds. This year, we included a project, a project costing over $1 million in the 1617 budget to replace the woodland roof, and we are well into a student growth advisory committee to plan for future facility needs based on our enrollment growth and also our degrading facilities. Next area is to establish and implement a schedule of needed maintenance for all buildings and grounds, and to provide financial resources to adhere to the schedule. A job order process is in place for staff to request minor repairs and improvements to facilities, and is mentioned in the above subject of the facilities meeting the demands for an increasing student body, which is, as mentioned, being studied by the Student Growth Committee. The next area is to conduct a space The next area is to conduct a space audit to identify all usable classroom space in each of the buildings to ensure optimum utilization of all available spaces. And this is being studied currently as part of the Student Growth Advisory Committee. Go-4 is technology and the arts. Our first activity in that section was to develop an inventory and assess needs at the building level. The elementary iPad inventory was conducted in December of 2014. A complete inventory was completed and submitted to the Assistant Superintendent in April of 2015, and an ongoing inventory is maintained by the technology staff. Next area is to, was to identify programmatic needs for virtual learning environments, classroom instruction, and park assessments. Interestingly, again, something that was mentioned tonight in the curriculum committee, parked information provided via multiple methods includes video presentations by the Assistant Superintendent and content supervisors, parent information nights throughout the year prior to park, and the website is updated regularly. Google Drive and Google Classroom training opportunities through district professional development have been offered. Professional development opportunities for teachers in the virtual learning environment genre, including flipped classrooms, Google Apps for Education, and iPads have significantly increased for this year, 2016, or 2017, for next year, I'm sorry. And Chromebooks have been purchased for utilization at the elementary Next area is to identify a protocol for refreshing and protecting district digital equipment, including iPad learning tools. There's an Apple Refresh at the high school that took place in the summer and this past fall, or will this fall coming up, and some Chromebooks were purchased for the elementary level. Next area is to assess community needs for technological-related services, student interns, student-created products as a revenue source, and providing practical, real-life experiences. We had a constraint with this area to, you know, there's legal and tax implications when you get into students producing things and selling it outside of school. So it is limited with what we can do with that. But we do have some collaboration, as I mentioned, with our town historian for projects that we can do. Next area is to assess current arts programs at the building level, identify areas/programs to expand in both fine and performing arts, such as instrumental, theater, graphics, audio, and visual design. The K-12 art and music programs utilize iPads and computers with programs such as Artsonia to create digital portfolios and video technology to enhance reflection of performance-based assessments. It is amazing walking through the school and going in some of the classrooms and seeing what the students are capable of doing and how well-prepared those students will be, no matter what field they go into, but especially any students that are going into the digital media field and graphic arts, TV production. Really, they get an excellent education in that area. And lastly, communication, goal number five. First activity was to create an online survey for all target groups to solicit feedback on educational programs, hot topics, and find the best means to communicate effectively. Parents, student, and teacher surveys were completed for cluster, the cluster grouping pilot, and this program is now integrated into our instructional program. Next area was to create flexible focus groups that are representative of the various constituencies in our community. Superintendent, myself, has been meeting with the PTO, PTA presidents, the senior community groups, along with our board president, the League of Women Voters, student liaisons, and other groups. Our Student Growth Advisory Committee, which is comprised of representatives of the various constituencies in the community, has been meeting monthly. The next area was to create opportunities for interactive communication venues through the use of technology, including Skype, TV, hotlines, et cetera, for focus groups. Technologies such as Facebook, Twitter, Constant Contact, and websites are used for interactive communication. Another area was to develop town hall meetings, a town hall meeting model for in-person input for focus group and key communicators. And our Student Growth Advisory Committee, I think, is an excellent example of that. It is in a town hall format where, you know, we are receiving input from various stakeholders throughout the community, and that group or some version of that group will most likely continue into the summer and fall and winter of next year. And town hall formats are certainly slated, or they're on the agenda for that, their itinerary for that. Under objective two, to update the alert now system to reflect parental preferences regarding best, the best number to contact, to contact them, the preferred methods of communication. This is done annually. Our online updates are still being investigated. School and district highlights broadcasted on a regular schedule through local cable channel of the NJEA Classroom Focus. For us, we use Channel 28 and other sources such as the Falcon Flyer, the Falcon Express, Facebook, and Twitter to broadcast school and district highlights. Each school also maintains a digital format, such as an e-newsletter, Twitter, and Facebook, also for communicating their highlights. And I believe this is the last block here, to explore utilizing social media, such as Facebook and Twitter, as a viable option for the district, and to create an electronic newsletter to communicate school and district news. And I think basically what I just said has met that. So I would like to just commend the board for its vision. When you created the strategic plan, although I wasn't here, I, you know, I read about it, the history of this, and the collaborative process that was used with the community, and I think it's an excellent document, and the board certainly showed its wisdom in creating this document. So that concludes my report, Mr. President, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kozak. Does any board member have a question for Dr. Kozak concerning the plan? Yes, Mr. Nostine.
Nice job, Dr. Kozak. It looks like a lot of effort and a lot of thought went into achieving the results. I just had a question, now if I can find it, on goal one, objective two, item two, to develop a character education program. I know that you're a data-driven person, and I respect that, and I am also. Under the indicators of success, I would like to have seen, and I know that, I'm sure that you didn't even make that up, but I think that what was lacking in that, it would have been nice to see some sort of data to see if our HIB cases are actually, in fact, decreasing. I see that one of the things on here, one of the items is an annual state anti-bullying grade. Is that reflective of the amount of HIB incidents?
Yes. So let me answer you. You mentioned a couple of things. First, you're right, it did not have anything to do with the indicators of success because that was done a few years ago. The HIB grade from the state is, looks at all the information. Do we train everyone? Do we provide proper training for staff, for parents, for volunteers? Are the number of cases reported, have there been an increase or decrease? So we have been scoring very well on that. It's an annual report that the state puts out. There's very much of a self-reflective process involved in that. And I agree, with the data is very, very important. We have now, this year, we just purchased and are using a program called Hipster. And you're familiar with it, the board is familiar with it, because that's the program that I draw the reports that I bring to you and I report to you every single board meeting on any HIB cases. And I did run a report just for repeat offenders that I was going to share with the board in closed session. It was a question that was asked before. We have very few repeat offenders for HIB. In fact, we have two repeat, two students that were identified as repeat offenders, and one was only for two cases, the other one, I think, was three or four. And repeat victims, one. And that in and of itself is a pretty good indicator of the environment that's created. We can easily run a report over the past couple of years to see where we are with the HIB, the number of HIB cases reported. The last I looked, we are on a steady decline. You know, are we ever going to eradicate all bullying and HIB? Probably not, because it'll show up in different forms. But I feel that by educating students, parents, and, you know, anyone we can, that we will constantly create a safe learning environment for students. And when we, when issues do arise, we look at not only punitive measures to address what's been done, but we look in a very proactive measure and say, are our programs sufficient? Can we improve our programs? Can we create a better environment? So it's a systems approach. It's an ongoing approach.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Not seeing one, we can move on. Dr. Kozak mentioned that our last board meeting, we had a very positive preliminary budget presentation for which we thanked Mr. Gorski and the Finance Committee. It's now my pleasure to turn the mic over to Mr. Gorski for the public budget hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ryback. For disclosure purposes, the order that we'll do the budget presentation and the resolution will be as follows. First, we're going to start with a quick PowerPoint presentation, which largely remains unchanged from the preliminary budget, which is posted on our website. I will then read a resolution, followed by board deliberation on the resolution, and then we will turn it over to a public forum for comments and questions on the budget prior to the board's vote. So on behalf of Dr. Kozak, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Dory Alvik, Assistant Superintendent, and myself, we would like to welcome you to this year's final budget presentation of the Monroe Township's Board of Education. Members of the Board of Education include President, Mr. Stephen Ryback, Vice President and Finance Chair, Mr. Tom Nostine, Mrs. Michelle Arminio, Mr. Marvin Braverman, Ms. Jill DeMayo, Mr. Lou Kaufman, Mrs. Kathy Koloponowicz, Ms. Dawn Carino, Mr. Frank Russo, and our Jamesburg representative, Mr. Paul Rutsky. The Finance Committee, which was very instrumental in the design and challenge that administration was given to produce this year's budget, consists of Chairperson, Mr. Tom Nostine, Vice Chairperson, Mr. Lou Kaufman, Mrs. Kathy Koloponowicz, Ms. Dawn Carino, and an alternate of Ms. Michelle Arminio. Vision Statement of the District: Monroe Township Board of Education commits itself to all children by preparing them to reach their full potential and to function in a global society through a preeminent education. The mission statement is the Monroe Township Public Schools, in collaboration with the members of the community, shall ensure that all children receive an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe and orderly environment. District goals were established around the same time that the board philosophy was, last October. And you could see those three district goals here. They are also posted on our website and throughout the district. And the executive summary. The Monroe Township School Budget for the 1617 school year was developed within specific parameters set forth by the board's philosophy directive and the Finance Committee's challenge to administration, to prepare a comprehensive budget, meeting the needs of 250 to 300 additional students, addressing aging facilities without any expectation of additional state aid, and while suppressing taxes by staying under cap by $600,000. That is a remarkable feat considering that in this budget, we have a $1.1 million roof replacement project, we are educating almost 300 additional students, and we are $600,000 under the state's cap limit to raise taxes. This board wanted to send a message to the public and the community that we mean business, that when we prepared this budget, we went through every expenditure through committee process and with a zero-based approach to a lot of the areas. That starts with a clean slate, not a percentage increase or decrease over last year, and develops organically what your needs are for next year based on the enrollment, based on special education needs, and facility needs. And that's how this was prepared. On behalf of Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvik, and I, this challenge was accepted and our mission was accomplished. This budget has been professionally constructed to afford every student an opportunity for an exemplary education by well-trained, committed staff in a safe environment. Opportunity is made available through a comprehensive curriculum, which offers diverse course offerings, and co-curricular clubs and activities. We believe that our proposed budget continues to become more efficient, as evidenced by a successful county budget efficiency review that Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvik, and I engaged in in January at the county office, where Monroe was exemplified amongst our peers for many best financial practices. Key budget considerations are as follows. Number one, increased student enrollment is paramount. You'll see some slides in a moment that demonstrate that visibly, that should get some reaction from the public when you see how many new students we've educated and what we're anticipating to educate in the future. Our facilities are aging, and they used to have a cap exemption for construction repairs, things like roofs and parking lots. No longer is that the case. They all fit within the cap. They all share the same resources as teachers and student supplies. Student-teacher ratios are very important. Dr. Alvik could speak to this, but there's a lot of research that demonstrates that low student-teacher ratios are critical at the elementary levels, and we maintain parity amongst our schools and do our best to keep those numbers down. We are $600,000 under the cap, where we could have gone and spent an additional $600,000, but we intentionally chose not to because of the last item, the tax consideration on the community. Board members are residents of this town, and Jamesburg adjacent to Monroe. We also have an open door and open phone policy to the public. Quite often, Dr. Kozak and Dr. Alvik and I are taking calls for members of the planned retirement communities and parents throughout the township about tax issues. And we are very cognizant of the trust that's given into us to put together a budget that's responsible. What is the budget creation timeline? It all begins with the budget philosophy. That's where the board tells administration what kind of cake to bake. And that begins around October. We first study historical enrollment patterns, because the size of budgets is determined by the size of, and number of students. We review staffing needs. We then develop a budget at the schools with a zero-based approach, starting from scratch. Go in the closet, see what you have, anticipate your needs, and order and produce a budget accordingly. Then the governor gives his budget address. Two days later, we receive our state aid award. We adopt a tentative preliminary budget, and then tonight is the final public hearing. What programs are in the budget? I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Alvik at this time to highlight some of the wonderful educational programs and all of the educational needs that we've met in this budget.
Thank you. I was not able to be here during the initial budget presentation, but I did work with our high school students to create a video, which is available online, which has a little bit more information. But I just want to highlight some of the programs that we are able to include in this budget for our students. We're continuing with the Common Core implementation. So even though we received our state testing results very late in the year, we did look at them and use them as a guide as we were moving forward. Were there professional development needs? Are there curricular revision needs? How can we best help our students to be successful on these assessments? During the next two years, we're going to be implementing the next-generation science standards as required. Next year, we will be implementing for grades six through 12, the following year, grades K through five. So we're working very closely. Last summer, we began the process through a curriculum mapping process that Ms. Casaleto led with some of our teachers. So we are already in place to move forward with curriculum writing this summer to implement those standards next year. Each of our schools has a school garden, many of them through grants that were received from the New Jersey Agricultural Society or the Sustainable New Jersey Grant. So we are moving forward, really having our students with hands-on programs in our schools. STEM is another area that we're moving forward with and really encouraging our teachers and using professional development for our teachers to get our students to really think and prepare them for college and careers. and prepare them for college and careers. We have aligned our assessments to all of the Common Core standards, and we use the DRA II assessment in the lower levels, and we are looking at some online benchmarking tools for our students to begin using next year as a way for us to evaluate our curricular programs and also to help prepare our students for the online assessments that they are taking. We have many athletics and co-curricular activities for all of our students throughout the budget. As Dr. Kozak mentioned earlier, we have a very involved character education program, which has been helping as we implement all of the laws and requirements through the HIB law. We currently offer 28 AP courses at our high school with over 820 students enrolled in those courses. Obviously, many of our students are taking multiple AP courses during the year. All students are expected to take the AP exam at the end of each of those courses. We have a very strong special education department. We meet the needs of all of our students. Kudos to the people personnel services because we have brought back many of our students from out of district, saving the district money in those areas. We also have a model professional development program where most of our professional development in the district is offered by our own teachers who have been trained as trainers. So we're saving money by not sending teachers out of district for much of our professional development. We're doing it in-house. And our model is actually a national model at this point for our professional development program. We've also received many accolades, and I just want to highlight some of our data from last year. For our 2014-15 graduating class, our graduation rate was 97%. 86% of those students attended either a two- or a four-year college. 3% attended career and technical schools, 2% entered the military, 5% entered the workforce. Our average scores for our Monroe Township High School students who participate in the SAT and ACT score, they score higher than the state average. We are also one of 10 districts that were originally inducted into Innovate New Jersey because of all of the innovation and practices that we're using with all of our technology throughout our school, our balanced literacy approach, and our hybrid program that we use at our elementary schools for world language, where we use Rosetta Stone, but we also incorporate on a part-time basis for our students with the world language teachers. And we are also recognized as a transformative school, our high school, which is, this award celebrates technology, innovation, and alternative learning in America's high school classrooms. So even though we took our time, we really spent a lot of time with the budget defense rounds, we are still meeting the needs of our students, and we do have a lot of great things still available to everyone in our budget.
Thank you, Doctor. Key facts on state aid. There's two categories of aid. First is equalization aid. That is the largest area of resource for state aid, and it's designed to support a district's adequacy budget. What is an adequacy budget? It's a hypothetical model created by a state think tank of former educators and state officials and some members of the public to come up with what a hypothetical school should cost, what a hypothetical special education population should be, what a hypothetical teacher guide should look like, and so on. And it's an extremely conservative model that basically is a bare-bones school district. Equalization aid is designed to support through state aid the equalization budget. And it is calculated, and the state funds are distributed based upon a district's wherewithal to support their local fair share themselves, and if they cannot, the state then pays for it in the area of state aid. Based upon property wealth and income levels, property wealth coming from the aggregate net valuation ratables in the town, and income levels coming from that four-digit code on your New Jersey 1040 income tax filing. Monroe is very wealthy and very affluent. And because of that statistic, the state gives us zero equalization aid to support the largest operations to run a school, which is the adequacy budget. Categorical aid is a specific categories of state aid designed to reimburse school districts for different areas where they qualify for this state aid type. Transportation aid is one. Monroe's transportation department is the most efficiently rated transportation department in the county. We qualify for the largest amount of state aid in this area, but it's limited because of our over adequacy status, and what they give us is amortized over a five-year period. We also receive special education aid. That's another categorical type of aid that has a decrease in the 1617 budget compared to the prior year, even though our special education numbers are growing very steadily. And state aid is only 3.09% of our total revenue to support the school budget and one of the lowest state aid per pupil ratios in the county. We've talked at length about district areas of address in this category. We've even drafted our own in-house legislation that was sponsored by Senator Greenstein to fully fund the formula for Monroe, and unfortunately, that never gained traction. Dr. Kozak and Mr. Ryback and I met with Senator Sweeney recently and Senator Greenstein at the arrangement of Mayor Tamboro, and we went down to the State House and we presented a plethora of financial information lobbying our case for additional state aid and why the distribution of aid is unfair specifically to Monroe. And we were quite enthused because they knew our data before we got there. They were familiar with our issue. And Senator Sweeney offered a solution that could bring Monroe as much as $2 million, to quote him, in the 1718 budget by a running of the formula and an elimination of the hold harmless provision. What that is, is a few years back, when state revenues dried up and state aid became scarce, they just held districts harmless and said, everybody's going to get the same amount you got last year, plus or minus some window dressing. That is particularly hazardous to Monroe because we are picking up 300 new students a year, and other districts are having decreasing enrollment, and their student-to-state aid ratios are growing while ours are decreasing. We are confident pursuant to our meeting that that's going to change and that there is hope on the horizon, and we are going to keep the pedal down on this issue and be relentless to get more money because it's a disgrace that 85 cents of every dollar to support public education in the township of Monroe is coming from the local tax levy. Local tax levy from taxpayers who pay not only income and sales and excise taxes that are being diverted to other areas of the state other than where you live. And we will continue our address of that. I've handed out two handouts. One is a comparative sources of revenue. They are also posted on our website. And what's noteworthy from Schedule A is that fund balance applied from last year grew about $2.2 million. That was due to the direct efforts of administration to finish the 1516 budget as efficiently as possible, and through efforts of intense negotiations with Horizon to keep down health benefit costs, through the fruit of labor negotiation agreements with various groups who have given back a lot through negotiations, including medical and other concessions, and through purchase order freezes initiated by the superintendent. We closed last year with residual money left in the budget of $2.2 million exceeding the prior year. $975,000 was directed by the board to go into a capital reserve account to deal with facilities in the future, and it could be used as also a down payment on a bond referendum. And $600,000 was used for new appropriation needs. $600,000 was dedicated to go under cap. We also reached a very amicable agreement with Jamesburg, as I mentioned previously, and Jamesburg Board of Education is doing their part to fulfill the needs of maximizing the tuition estimate paid to Monroe. And then when it gets compared to Monroe's actual cost, there should be an arbitrage that will be applied back to the indebtedness that existed a few years ago as a result of the 2010 cap, which left Jamesburg without the means to raise enough budgeted money to pay Monroe. I also provided a comparative state aid schedule. And unfortunately, the net result of this is that for the 1617 school year, we saw an increase of state aid of only $15,000. I mentioned that we're expecting about 300 new students. The state's contribution to those 300 new students is to pay for about one of them with additional state aid funding. And finally, I gave a two-year comparative appropriation detail schedule. What's noteworthy in there is the significant decreases as a result of zero-based budgeting. Some of the only increases are the negotiated labor agreement increases, a lot of which were offset by concessions throughout other areas of the budget. This budget contains 22 new full-time equivalent staff to handle growth of students, $1.1 million to replace the woodland roof, 354 passenger buses and 324 passenger vans with two drivers, a replenishment and recreation of the tennis courts on Schoolhouse Road, which was paid by $300,000 given to us by the township through an agreement, and many other areas of address in the curriculum that Dr. Alvik mentioned. Our miscellaneous sources consist of the following information on this chart. And it's a small percentage of revenue, so I don't want to spend too much time on it. And here's our enrollment projection from our demographer as of March 2016, projecting 258 new students through those various grade levels for next year. That's a very conservative projection, as we've seen historically. This chart shows that budgets are driven by student enrollment, and the Monroe Township Board of Education has picked up 1,330 students over the past eight years. And our anticipation is that that pace is probably going to pick up in the future. This unfortunate slide shows the inverse relationship between the growth of students and state aid funding. As you could see, the 2008 school year, we were left with about $258,000 of general fund aid, and then we experienced a dead cat bounce up to about a $2 million or $3 million level, where it has remained flat due to the hold harmless provision, despite the fact that our enrollment is growing so aggressively. We experienced over the last eight years, a 39% decrease in state aid while absorbing 25% more students. Where does the money go? When you calculate the benefits in the orange portion to those of teachers and bus drivers and those who directly touch students, the percentage of expenditures on instruction The money does not go to administrative costs, and you could see the inverse relationship between the county limit per pupil in administrative costs and the decreasing per pupil cost of Monroe's administrative cost spending. The administrative cost areas are the school administrative areas, principal, vice principal, the central office areas, the information technology, and the superintendent's office. Due to efforts intentionally designed by the board to create savings, such as bringing in a quality in-house counselor instead of paying a large firm for legal advice, the Monroe Board of Ed for that one example saved over $100,000 per year and increased the service to everybody in the district. This is a comparative schedule for adequacy status, and it is no surprise that with going under cap by $600,000 and by absorbing increased enrollment of students, that our above adequacy status has decreased 32% in the 1617 school year compared to the prior year, $4.3 million. That's an important statistic because the amount of above adequacy phases out categorical state aid and also may be a factor in the new state aid formula that's under design. They could limit award based on how much you're spending above the adequacy model. We have numerous cost savings from shared services. Our food service department provides lunches to the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission. We recycle everything you can imagine here, including cardboard, glass, paper, metals, batteries, computers, and profit from those recyclings. Transportation services aggressively solicits the sharing of bus routes with other districts who intersect with ours on a routing map. Purchasing. I just received a letter from the County Regional Ed Service Commission that to date, since we joined the county purchasing consortium three and a half years ago, we've saved over $2 million in purchasing supplies. And supplies are anything consumed in one business cycle. They're a very vast category. We buy everything through their bulk purchasing consortium, and compared to buying from state contract or bidding, we've saved over $2 million. Technology services, we participate in E-rate funding. Insurance coverage and benefits, we participate in the New Jersey School Boards Association Insurance Group. And with the municipality, again, they are restoring our tennis courts on Schoolhouse Road and have offered to us in preliminary stages, two potential land donations, one for future construction of school needs, if that should be the result of the ad hoc committee, and the other is adjacent to the administrative building, which is desperately needed for additional bus parking and could be easily used for that purpose. What factors influence the tax rate? Number one, state aid. If Monroe was to receive just the state aid that South Brunswick received, you would have a tax reduction this year that would make your head spin. So state aid is the largest variable in what affects the tax rate. Next is fund balance applied. That is something that we can control. Fund balance is a result of underspending the budget from how you designed it, and you do that by competitive contracting and purchasing, efficient purchasing, purchase order freezes, and jointures, and by aggressively fighting with Horizon, Blue Cross Blue Shield for insurance premium relief. And of course, budgets are driven by students. How does this all affect the pocketbook? There's so many wonderful programs in this budget. We've met every educational need, every special education need, every transportation need, every curricular need, every facility need. Last year, the budget increased four and a half cents. This year, by the excess surplus that's been applied by going under cap and by a lot of the cost-saving elements constructed throughout the budget, we are pleased that the budget is only increasing three and a half cents. That is less than half of the 10-year average. Last year, a four and a half cent increase resulted in an increase for an average assessed home of $138.44. This year, we're pleased that the increase will only be $108.66. I'd like to thank everybody who participated in this budget, particularly all the principals and directors in the back of the room. This was a true group project that began back in October, and there were some very stressful moments in its construction, but the net result is something that we're all very proud of, that serves the community and our students especially very well. Our main objective in putting this budget together is meet students' needs and be responsible to the community second, and this budget does that extremely well. So now I would like to read the resolution. So now I would like to read the resolution and then turn it over to board discussion and deliberation. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the following amounts in resolution for the 2016-2017 final budget. Be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the 1617 general fund budget be adopted in the amount of $108,213,769, and a general fund local tax levy in the amount of $95,431,684, and a special revenue fund in the amount of $1,124,557, and a debt service budget in the amount of $10,831,817, and a debt service local tax levy in the amount of $10,212,65, whereby the 1617 budget totals $120,170,143. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts, and whereas such state aid amounts are, for the 201617 categorical special education aid is $1,976,819, and the 201617 categorical security aid is $103,764, and the 201617 categorical transportation aid is $570,717, and for the 201617, the debt service aid is $618,446. And for the 20162017, other state aid amounts consisting of park readiness aid of $58,980, and per pupil grant aid of $58,980, and professional learning community aid of $62,515, and host district support aid of $403. Whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for the 20162017, the estimated extraordinary aid amount is $214,453. And whereas school district bylaws 0147, Policy 3440, Policy 4440, and NJAC 6A:23B-1.2B provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for such travel and expense reimbursement for the 20162017 school year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the 201617 school year at the tenet of sum of And be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded. And whereas a result of the extraordinary budget efficiencies created by the administrative stewardship of the budget, which led to an increase in excess surplus as an alternate revenue sourced taxes, the board budgeted $600,000 under cap, notwithstanding the continuing inequity in state aid funding, as well as the significant student growth and widespread facility needs in the district. And now therefore, let it be resolved that the superintendent of schools and the business administrator board secretary file the required documents with the executive county superintendent.
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to open the floor up for questions by the board. Questions or comments?
I have a question. First of all, I want to commend you on such a good budget. And my question is, in the year-to-year comparison, under the administration, I'm just curious as to how you're decreasing supply costs by 54%.
A significant contribution came from the budget development from the principals. There has been some significant cost cutting in the areas of administrative supplies. And also, the comment that I mentioned before about our joining the Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission for a purchasing consortium of supplies has created efficiencies in purchasing that has also helped reduce those administrative supplies.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment from board members? There's so many of them.
Does that category have to do with Google Docs?
Yes, ma'am.
Does it?
Yes.
That's your favorite quote.
You better get on board.
Mr. Russo.
I wanted to bring it up last time, but Dr. Allrich wasn't here. Great job on the video. I didn't know that students helped you, it was very professional. So for those people that maybe didn't get a chance to see it, I would urge them to take a look at it. Good work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? At this point, I'll open the floor up to anyone from the public who'd like to make a comment or ask a question. I'll remind you that you'll have three minutes to do so. Come through the microphone, state your name and address. Is there anyone from the public wishing to? Yes.
Good evening, Dr. Kozak, members of the board. My name is Mike Kacharsky. I reside at 25 Ave., UK, and I just have a couple very brief questions, and it's in regards to one of the budget considerations for new staff at the middle school. It's my understanding that there's eight new teachers that are proposed to be hired for the upcoming budget. Am I correct?
Staffing for that yet.
Yeah, Mr. Kacharsky, for the actual amount of staffing, yes, we are hiring new staff. I don't have that data right in front of me, but if you would like to email that question to me, I'd be certainly happy to reply to you with it.
Sure, I'll do that. And my actual, what I'm trying to get at is that a special education teacher, would you know if that is in the works to hire at the middle school? Because it's one of the, the reason I'm asking, sir, is it's one of the budget considerations that's on the district's website.
Yeah. Anytime a district hires new staffing, it's not always specific to a certain school. So if an opening occurs, somebody retires, somebody leaves, an opening could occur. Of course, student population shifts require different staffing. So we do put staffing issues in our budget, which are all detailed, our budget is online, and certainly or will be available after tonight. But as far as specifically where they go, we have to determine that throughout the year, throughout now, between now and September, to make sure that all positions are filled appropriately.
Okay. So getting back to the budget regarding the special education instruction for new staff on page one here, maybe Dr. Gorski is familiar with the salary proposal of $49,282. Is that, is it safe to say that's for a new special education teacher?
Mr. Ryback, if you would permit, I'd be happy to go over the 22 new full-time equivalents that were budgeted in this year's budget, which should satisfy the gentleman's question.
Sure, absolutely.
Budgeting for new staff is a particularly cumbersome process in the budget. It's driven, in the general population, more easily by enrollment projections and by pupil teacher ratios and to create parity in the schools. We try to keep it lower in the elementary levels as best we can. Special education is a little more different. It involves a lot of coordination between the child study teams and the director of special education to ascertain what the ever-changing needs through IEPs, individual educational placements, are for the next 12 months, and to align staff accordingly to handle those specific categorical needs. They could be anywhere from multiple disabled teachers, autistic teachers, behavioral specialists, and so on. In the 1617 budget, the following positions are proposed. At the Monroe Township High School, there's a 1.0, 1.0 means one full-time position. 1.0 business teacher, 1.0 history teacher, that's to handle increased student growth at the high school. At Brookside School, there's a 2/3 of a reading specialist for grades third and fourth. At Mill Lake, there's a 1/3 reading specialist. At Woodland, there's a 1/3 reading specialist. At Monroe Township Middle School, there's a 1.0 phys ed teacher and a 1.0 English teacher. At the middle school, there's a .17, that's an additional section, for algebra. At Oak Tree, there's a 1/3 addition for reading specialist. At Applegarth, there's a 1.0 for grade five teacher, and at Applegarth, a 1/3 reading specialist. At the high school, there, in the special ed category, there's a 1.0 multiple disabled teacher. At the high school, there is 2.0 para-professionals for multiple disabled programs. At Mill Lake, there is a resource teacher, and there are two resource teachers at the high school. At the high school, there's a 1.0 para for the resource room, that's a special education program. At Mill Lake, there's a 1.0 autism teacher. At Mill Lake, there's a 2.0 paras for autism. And throughout the district, there's a shared 3.0 positions for speech OT and PT. In addition to that, there's finally two bus drivers full-time, and that's a total of 22 full-time equivalent positions, many of which are in special education programs and have been intelligently designed to meet the exact needs of the students.
So this $49,000 salary is not necessarily for the middle school, it could be for any position in the district? Am I correct with that?
If you're referring to the summary sheet, that's correct.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Robert Roach, Rep. Boulevard. The Monroe Township Strategic Plan, I assume that's a multi-year plan? And was the cost determined for the year 1617 as to what this plan would cost budget-wise?
Mr. President, I can attempt to answer that. I'm not...
Do you have the answer?
I was going to approach that question by saying a strategic plan by its nature is a five-year plan, and it would be very difficult to ascertain any individual one of the five years components in the budget. There certainly are components throughout the budget, but it would be very difficult to tie that back exactly to the strategic plan.
Well, have you estimated what the five-year cost would be?
Is there, is there a specific area that you're looking at? Because there's multiple areas in there, from programs to professional development to the purchase of technology to, I mean, there's all different areas in there. A lot have a cost, a lot do not. Is there a specific area that you're looking for?
When you develop a plan and you're implementing a process, I would assume one of the factors would be, what's it going to cost?
Absolutely.
As well as the educational process for it, the value of it, and I think you should be evaluating the cost versus the value, and just making a determination.
Sure, absolutely. And every program is also evaluated as it goes through the budget process. So you can develop a five-year strategic plan, it's hard to predict cost five years out. But every year, we have an annual budget process, and every part of that plan that is put forth to advance would be looked at from a cost perspective and also evaluated.
Well, many, many businesses do long-range planning, and they figure out the cost of it. I would assume that the school administration and the board would do the same type of thing when they're developing a long-range plan.
Doctor? Sure. The strategic plan is more of a vision, it's a more broad-stroke approach to the district's needs in a macro consideration for the next five years. It would be impossible to segment each of the years of that five because of the incredible variation in student needs and revenues from all different sources. But in so much as it's not designed to be a five-year budget, it's more of a five-year visionary plan in broad strokes on the district's needs and goals, and then the actual mission of accomplishing those goals is performed in the annual school budget.
Right. Thank you, and I'd like to compliment you on saving the $600,000 on the cap. I'm glad to see the board and administration developed a new recipe for baking the cake that they've been baking for so many years, the same old way, and I hope they continue with, and don't throw away the recipe.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, we could move on to the committee report. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote, yes.
Mr. Board President, members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, this roll call is for the final budget adoption, moved by Mr. Kaufman and seconded by Ms. Arminio. Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And with an eligibility to vote, Mr. Ruzki?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Gorski, and the finance committee for such a great job. Thank you. Now we can move to committee reports. Is any committee chair? Yes.
So it's Board of Education meeting, so that can only mean there was a curriculum committee. Went through a couple of agenda items, five in particular. I'm going to go through them in really no particular, well, yeah, there's a particular order. First one, we reviewed a policy which is looking to go forward to the policy committee with respect to the entrance age review. Keep me honest, we're talking about setting a minimum age of six years old at 1231 to make sure that the kids coming into our school can be tested at the same age to determine if they're ready to come into kindergarten.
This would be students who did an outside kindergarten program who are looking to come in as first graders. So it's setting a testing deadline for those students, but we'll bring it forward to policy.
The next item was to review the preliminary report card, which is now, I guess, lowering, well, actually, I almost say lowering because it's really not lowering, it's presenting a uniform scorecard platform or format for all grades K through three, correct? Okay, good. Thanks for giving me some feedback. We also reviewed a proposal to speak to the development and creation of a Monroe Township High School Hall of Fame, which will be, at least initially, looking at athletic students, and then we talked about maybe alternating every year for just, not just athletics in the following year, it would be, you know, for the whole school, and to determine in the future what kind of format that would be, whether it would be, you know, a case or something, maybe more 21st century. I guess discussions will be had on that. Also, we talked about the National English Honor Society. The committee was all in favor of that, to push that forward. But the big piece of cake, yeah, sorry, it's big to me. Arguably, for, I'll say conservatively, for 10 years, some of you have heard me repeatedly make requests on presenting some kind of program where 100% of our high school students would be required to take some type of online course. I didn't really care what it was, but it would be a course which 100% of our students would be required to take, and it would be online. That would put our students in a position to be more adaptive in a 21st century learning model where, you know, let's face it, in the professional world, you're learning, you're corporate training, what have you, it's all online. You're required to learn it online, and certainly when you get into college, it's a requirement. Well, I'm happy to say that we're going to launch in, I guess, September, our first online for personal finance and economics, because that's a requirement for graduation, both of those courses, they're going to be online. First year, we're going to have it as a online course, but it's going to be in a classroom, and then we're going to kind of move it forward to be 100% online, so it won't have to take up class space. We'll be able to open up the opportunity to take the course in the summer. So again, taking a course to get it out of the way of the schedule, and let the students take it when they wish. And really, the big gun here is, well, this is a lot, this is very big. For those of you who don't know, this is huge. The other option here is to also present these courses, since they're online, open it up for other districts to take these courses for a fee, and also provide content material to other districts and, you know, let Monroe reap the benefits, if you will. So very big day. Shout out to Terry Weiss, thank you for finally doing this. Took a while, but it's done. More to come. Thanks, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Any question for Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Russell?
It sounds amazing with the online, I just have a question, is, so I can understand it, are teachers are going to be teaching this online, and then we're going to provide that content to other districts? this online, and then we're going to provide that content to other districts eventually down the road. So basically, we're freeing up, it's mostly space that we're freeing up and also getting them used to using it. Sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Any other committee chair? Mr. Nostine?
Thank you, Mr. Board President. We had a finance committee meeting on Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the central office, and guess what we talked about? The budget. We pretty much went over exactly what we went over here, so I'm not going to dwell on that. We also discussed the Falcon Care and the ECE financial statements. As happy as Mr. Kaufman is with the online courses, I am equally as happy with the profit statements from the Falcon Care and the ECE programs. The ECE program has, is showing a profit of $255,000, and the, actually, the opposite. The EC has a profit of $91,000, and the Falcon Care has a net profit of $255,000. So we're very, very pleased. They're above the projections that we had originally thought, and things are moving along quite well in both those. So I commend the staff who runs that, and I commend Ms. Sharon Jensen for all her hard work and her staff in keeping this all together for the board. We also had a Falcon Care proposal, an ECE proposal, for an upgrade in vendor software. There has been some issues with billing, et cetera, and communication with the parents, and this will solve those problems. And along with that, we're going to be increasing the tuition slightly for both of those to cover some of these added expenses. And that concludes my report, Mr. Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Nostine. Any question?
Does any of that go toward repayment of the loan? Has that been calculated?
Yeah. Mr. President? Yes, we talked in finance that since the board passed a resolution directing administration to pay back the loan $5,000 a month, which goes back probably three years ago, December, we've made those payments religiously, and with these handsome net incomes, we would first like to establish a little bit of roots in the program, a little retained earnings, and then in the immediate future, after that, probably make a significant contribution toward a loan payoff.
And you don't have to answer this now, but do we have a balance on that loan at this point?
Off the top of my head, I think it's about $170,000.
Left?
Yes.
That's extraordinary. That's about half of what the original loan was, is that correct?
$300,000.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you very much. Thank you, the finance committee, to really work that out.
Thank you. Any other committee chair?
Board President Ryback. The policy committee did not have the opportunity to meet in this short time, so we will be doing that prior to the next meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone, we could move to our first public forum. This is to address items on the agenda. Again, anyone from the public wishing to come to the podium? You have three minutes, just need you to state your name and address. Is there any interest in addressing the agenda? Okay. Not seeing any one. We can move to our superintendent's report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Kozak. Thanks, Mr. Board President. At the last board meeting, there was a question about our substitutes and receiving health coverage. So I would just like to provide a response to that. At the last Board of Education meeting on April 13, 2016, during the public forum, two substitute teachers in the district inquired as to why they were not being scheduled to work five days a week as reportedly they had been in past years. In response to this inquiry, I'd like to state the following. Staffing decisions are within the sole managerial prerogative of the Board of Education. The decision to utilize personnel, including on-call substitutes, is determined by examining a variety of factors, including but not limited to district needs, qualifications, and prior performance. Board of Education is fortunate to have a large substitute database containing the names of many qualified substitutes who would like to have the opportunity to work in the district. In utilizing the on-call substitutes, the administration endeavors to provide opportunities for substitute teaching or teaching to all qualified substitutes in an equitable manner in accordance with the needs of the students of the district. I would also like to, on a separate item, mention that the 2015-16 New Jersey Principal and Supervisor Association Middlesex County Outstanding Student Award for our high school went to Kush Shah, who was our valedictorian and will attend Columbia University. Kush is the first in his class and the valedictorian. He is the Monroe recipient of the Middlesex County Chapter of the New Jersey Principal and Supervisor Association nominated by his building principal. And the event was held last night at the NJPSA headquarters in Monroe and was attended by Mr. Goro Kush and his parents. Also had an opportunity, I'm trying to get to as many of the student events as possible, and not only are our academic teams doing well, and I include that in every week in the board's weekly confidential, students are just knocking it out of the ballpark academically. I mean, really, really doing well. And our sports teams are doing well also. So today, after, before the board meeting, I ran over and I went to see the softball team play, the varsity softball team, but there was a mercy ruling. Our team had done so well that they ended the game before it ended. So congratulations to our girls softball team. I'll have to get over there quicker. They got that game so quick, I was, you know, I mentioned girls across before. And the baseball team, by the time I left to get over to the committee meeting, it was, we were up 3-0, and the team looked great. So kudos to not only the players, but also the coaches as well. And with that, that concludes my report. I think you've heard enough of me speaking.
It's always a pleasure having you speak, Dr. Kozak. All right, on the personnel, can I have a motion to approve items A through J?
No move.
Second.
Can you vote, Mr. Korski?
Mr. Board President, did you want to ask any members of the questions on personnel A through J?
I do. Okay. Seeing no questions, we can vote now.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes, abstaining on H.
So noted, thank you. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
I abstain with the exception of items D, E, F, and J, where I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, personnel items A through J passes.
Okay. We're ready for, I believe, the business administrator's report. I have a motion to approve board actions A through K?
J.
J.
Second.
Second, okay. Any comments, questions?
Board action items A through J, Ms. Arminio?
Yes, on everything except I, policy 168, recording board meetings. That's a no.
That's a no. Thank you. Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
I abstain with the exception of items A and C, where I vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Board President, board action items A through J passes.
Thank you. Now we're ready for the business administrator's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through C be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
And Mr. Rutske?
So for clarification purposes, I may have spoke too soon on the last one.
Okay.
But on this one, I do abstain with the exception of items A and C.
Okay.
And I'll go back and abstain from all on the last, I believe.
Okay. So noted, I will record that in a minute. Appreciate that clarification. It's a little challenging with the Jamesburg voting. Our business office staff and our board attorney go through every agenda item and determine the applicability for Jamesburg in advance, and we try to asterisk that, but sorry about the confusion.
My apologies.
Yes, sir. Okay, we can do the board president's report. I have a few things I need to talk to everyone about, and kind of something that is important to all of us. You heard Mr. Korski talk about state aid, you heard him mention about the whole harmless portion of the state aid formula. We get a pittance of what I believe we should be getting, especially if you look at the amount of growth that we're experiencing and will experience in the next couple of years. I went to the Taxpayer's Guide to Education Spending, and I looked at what other districts are getting. Old Bridge gets 39%. North Brunswick, 20.6%. South Brunswick, 23.6%. Spotswood, 30.6%. What are we, at 11.2?
State aid?
Yeah.
Less than 3%.
Less than 3%. I have it listed incorrectly then over there. That being said, we need to lobby our state legislators because we certainly deserve more. And we can't keep footing the bill for quality education unless they start helping a little bit and giving us what we deserve. Now, we know that Senator Sweeney had a great idea, but we just can't leave it there. We need you, all of us, to write him, call him, call our state legislators, and show our support so that we get more state aid. It's unfair for these other districts. I'm not saying they don't deserve their state aid. All I'm saying is, we deserve more. That being said, on another topic, that's a little lighter, I'd like to congratulate the cheerleading team, who won the Grand National Championship in Myrtle Beach, so congratulations to all of them and their coaches. Yes, they deserve it. Of course.
And their parents.
Yes. And their parents, that's true. On another issue, this is concerning, you know, the Student Growth Advisory Committee. We have a meeting May 9. It is imperative that every member of that committee be present at the middle school at 7:00 in the cafeteria. And let me go through briefly why it's so important. On April 10, there was an article on the opinion page of the Home News Tribune concerning affordable housing. Basically, it was titled "The Costly Failure on Affordable Housing." In the newspapers, we read about the transportation fund, we read about gas tax, we read about Atlantic City. When have we been reading about affordable housing? The, this article basically states that the state has dropped the ball on this because nothing has been done for the past 16 years. So went to the courts. And the courts are telling the towns, not just Monroe, it's all over. They're telling the towns that you have to now make up what you should have been doing for affordable housing for the past 16 years and the next 10. What does that mean? It means a lot more housing. Of course, what you need to understand is, for every unit of affordable housing, a developer could build five of market value. So that's an awful lot of housing. We had what we thought were numbers that we would be working with, but about a week ago or so, Mayor Tamboro called myself, the superintendent, Mr. Korski, and Mr. Teig, the director of facilities, to his office to meet with him and his staff to tell us briefly, or give us an update, as to the tentative affordable housing settlement. Well, the numbers changed greatly. They went up. And he emphasized to us what the town has been doing. They didn't just accept it, they've been negotiating, actually, in the court, using everything, every means possible to get that number down. If they fought it and they went to court, chances are, they felt, the attorneys for the town believed that we would lose, and the numbers would be greatly higher. So this Student Growth Committee now has to rework very much what we've been doing because the numbers, it's a whole different game. I do want to emphasize that we do have commercial space included in this, and as a matter of fact, in many developments where there is mixed use, after a certain number of residential units, they have to build commercial, have to close on it before they continue on. And we'll go through that with the Student Growth Advisory Committee. I just have to emphasize to you the importance of what's happening and what it means to this town. It's not our fault, it's not the town's fault. The state dropped the ball, and the courts took over. With that, I'd like to turn the mic over to Mr. Korski, who would like to make a few comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ryback. In conjunction with the material event that's been disclosed to the Board of Ed pertaining to new housing starts, where we're expecting a significant number of new housing starts, multiple of what we were producing enrollment projections off of when the Student Growth Advisory Committee started, there's a need now to redo the enrollment projections known as demographic reports and pass a resolution for the demographer to immediately begin that process. And it's a cumbersome process involving lengthy discussions with administration, Mr. Teig, Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvec, and I, along with the township's attorneys, and Mr. Riggs, and Mr. Hamilton, and Mayor Tamboro. So, members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve Ross Haber Associates, Inc. to update the demographic study, which will encompass the short-term and long-term impact on the schools due to the recent changes in the Monroe Township's affordable housing requirements at a cost not to exceed $9,000, including expenses. The board president and the Business Administrator Board Secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement this action by the Board of Education.
I have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? Discussion.
This is the third time we're engaging in this demographics study, is that correct?
Yes. As we've mentioned before, demographic studies do need updating, but this is extraordinary due to this new disclosure of housing coming as a result of the settlement last week.
No, I get that. But the problem is, if the district, as the Board of Education, doesn't get the numbers from the township on a regular basis, and if they're not accurate, we keep incurring costs because we're not getting accurate information. And we've had, we had that problem over a year ago with Mr. Haber, when we had a very big public meeting, and people were outraged that the numbers were all over the place. Now, it's not, maybe not necessarily his fault, but we can't keep just spending money on demographics without good data, as we all know. Bad data in brings bad results. So my only objection is that this keeps going on and on, and very quickly, I would just take this exception with Board President Ryback's assessment that it's not the town's fault. I'm not, I wouldn't use the word fault, but however, we are in this, and yes, I understand all the COA regulations and all, but we are in this predicament because of the massive growth over the last 15 years. There were, this is the third-phase COA regulation, and they're actually changing the name to fair share housing. But it's an affordable housing element that has been on the books for 20 years, and just like, you know, when we bemoan the fact that we're not getting state aid, we've known that for a long time, we can't bemoan the fact that we have an obligation on affordable housing. These laws have been in effect for many years, and I think there's some bad planning that has gone on. We were originally at 2,300 We were originally at 2,332 affordable housing obligations. We're down to 1,133. I attended that court case last Monday, so I was, I heard what was going on, but it's a consequence of the rapid building that we've had. So, the demographer, we keep spending money. I mean, at some point, we have to be clear that these are the right figures. Are we closer to these being the right figures, do you think? Or can we ask?
I will say that Dr. Kozak, Mr. Teig, Board President Ryback, and I have met with township officials no less than three times in the last week or so, and we've also had multiple exchanges over the phone, and we have expressed the need to have accurate spreadsheets of new housing start information that's clearly presented so that our demographer can do a proper enrollment projection.
And I would agree. You're at a disadvantage, and it's essentially, you know, inaccurate information essentially renders the previous demographic studies useless. That would be my only thought.
Okay. Let's give the board president. Yeah, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, Ms. Arminio, and I'm looking at it from my perspective. When I'm looking at it, I'm trying to keep a balanced view. The demographic study that was done most recently is projecting, I think, will still be somewhat of an accurate prediction for the next five years. I think the impact that we're hearing, if I'm hearing it correctly, and the three of us were, you know, in multiple meetings, is that, especially with the affordable housing, that it's being rolled out over a 20-plus-year time span, so that we may see, our original demographic report, or our most recent demographic report, might still be somewhat accurate for the next five years, but it's changing our picture for the 10-year period, where we may be looking at Phase 1 and Phase 2 of student growth. And I don't want to say that that's 100% accurate. That's my interpretation of that.
Well, after this vote, I'm going to make, ask for a resolution, but at the court, at the law, I don't know, it's a lawsuit, it was before Judge Wolfson, they said that it's a 10-year build-out. They have to use, we have $13 million in our affordable housing fund that has to be used to zero within a 10-year period, and I believe there, the agreement is, and I could be wrong, I'm not an expert, but this is how I understood it, that there are 1,133 affordable housing units, and that's only 20% of the actual build-out. So, you have to multiply, I mean, 80% is going to be market rate. So, but it's a 10-year build, and I think they were very, very clear. My notes say, zero out the fund after a 10-year period, and that fund has $13 million in it. That's the information that was discussed at the court.
That sounds appropriate. I'd just like to comment, I just want to emphasize how involved we've all been. Mr. Teig is sitting there, he's right along with us.
And by the way, I went as a private citizen, not as a member of the board.
I understand.
And I just listened.
I'm sure you did. And we keep emphasizing to the town the importance of accurate information. We've gone back to them where we thought there was errors, and they were very open corrected. The other thing I just want to make clear is my comments is, I'm not opposed to affordable housing.
Correct.
It's the amount of housing that we're seeing, along with the market rate housing, that the impact will be on our town, because it's going to change the look of the town, it's going to, you know, certainly impact all citizens, including the school system. Mr. Russo.
I just wonder where they get that 1 to 5 ratio? Who comes up with that number?
Fair housing.
I don't know who came up with the number. I imagine it might be a court. Do you know?
I believe it's the, either the old COA regulations, but moving into the third phase, again, I'm not an expert, but as I understand it, the third phase is the fair share housing. They developed that plan, and each municipality has to fit their fair share housing element into such a plan, and that's where that should come up.
Thank you.
But I think.
Every house, they have to build, it's five market rate housing for every affordable.
And the builder wants that.
The builder gets that.
That's an incentive, the builder takes that incentive.
I mean, since Monroe is experiencing so much building, is there any consideration to the environment of Monroe? I mean, like we just discussed earlier, we get all our water from the ground. I imagine the sewage is processed in the same area.
Well, when a builder, I know, applies for development, it does have to get checked by the Environmental Protection Agency.
But we see what happened in Flint. I mean, we know, long-term, sometimes there are unforeseen circumstances. Once you continue to build, it could later cause more problems.
All I can say is, I hope that, you know, the different governmental agencies consider what they have to do as serious.
Should we be more proactive in that area?
I'm sorry?
Should we be more proactive in that area? It is, it can be an environmental issue.
I think, I think it's incumbent upon all the citizens to be vigilant of that, not just the Board of Education. We do everything we can, very involved with it, but I think, you know, there are meetings that you can go to, there are people you could write, and I think that it's incumbent upon all citizens to be aware of what's happening and voice their views.
But you're having meetings with those decision-makers. Can you raise that point?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other board members?
Yeah, so I'm going to vote no on this thing, and I'm going to tell you why. Because I don't have a question really that we need to do a demographic study, right? We just did one, and while we may need to have one, do we need to have one immediately? I don't know. Reason why I'm going to vote no is, I have a problem with the firm, not the quest. Same firm, used multiple times for an enormous amount of time. There have been questions about both the mechanics, the methodology, the what-have-you. Can't believe that they're the only game in town. Can't believe it. But before we go ahead and really do this, right, you guys know, because you guys are closest to the numbers, to see exactly, based on the projections that were made to what was delivered, if it's acceptable and it's reasonable. From the way it was presented, I just have a feeling that things were missed. Michelle brought up some good points about those meetings, while that's never a good meeting to have, they weren't done very well, and there were some follow-ups that had to happen about new data coming out, didn't have the new data. How do you not have the new data? That's your job. You're the data guy. You've got to have the good data, right? So, I just feel we need to be working smarter, not harder, and I'm just not sold there.
Mr. President?
Oh. Never happens.
Mr. President and members of the board, to Mr. Kaufman's comments, and I certainly understand where he's coming from, there's two main players in the enrollment projection arena, Whitehall &amp; Associates and Ross Haber &amp; Associates. The last round of enrollment projections, we used both simultaneously because more data for us provides a better analysis. And through many meetings with Mr. Teig, Dr. Kozak, Dr. Alvec, and I, we compared the results, and we found that Whitehall &amp; Associates' projections were materially understated compared to Ross Haber's. We found Ross Haber's to be more, in our view, predictable of what future events are going to occur, and that is why it is our recommendation as administration to utilize Ross Haber for enrollment projections. Much of the frustration we had before with Ross Haber had to do with his redistricting and his presentation skills, not necessarily the math and the computation of trend line analysis and everything that goes into enrollment projections. So, that's why, you know, we presented Ross for this next study, and we also got much quicker results from Ross last time, and when we are under the gun. To the second point, do we have to do these enrollment projections? Did they materially change? Can you still work with the ones that we did only a few weeks ago? The answer is yes. We received information of a material nature due to a significant housing settlement where the township is predicting much more housing to occur in the next five years, and then a less visible component in the longer term to 10 or 15 years in the future. That depends on builders' build-outs, they have the ability to build, but when they do, depends on economic situations and a host of other things. That a demographer like Ross Haber, who's got experience with Monroe over a long period of time, can best serve us, in our opinion, to produce projections that can best anticipate when these things will come online, as he's done in the past.
Mr. Nusslein.
I too have concerns with this presentation. First of all, I'm a little disappointed this way. I didn't see this on the agenda. Did I miss it, or was it just not on the?
On the board report.
Okay. I mean, I would like to have seen this on the agenda so we could have asked some of these questions before the meeting, and I actually would have liked to have seen this come through maybe the BG&amp;T or the Finance Committee first, where we could have hammered it out in much greater detail. $9,000, to me, for a study that was just done not that long ago, seems like a lot of money. I don't see why we have to, like, start from scratch again, when we could basically take the numbers that we have, that we're admitting are pretty good numbers, and maybe just compare them with the current projections and extrapolate from there. I think 9,000, that number rings a bell, like, maybe that was close to the original study before we had any, you know, when we really had a stale demographer study. So, that's my concern. I understand the issue that there's only two firms out there that do this, but at some point, we just have to say, you know, you go to, go to war with the army that you have, and to me, to keep going back and going back, I would just like to see the difference between the houses that were estimated in the last study as to, and to the new one. And I don't see why we just can't extrapolate from there. I think this is not necessarily a good thing.
Mr. President, in respect of Mr. Nusslein's comments, the, you know, we were called into a meeting with the township as we had progressed pretty far with the ad hoc committee, and we were actually looking at designs for facilities to handle the increased enrollment over the next five years. This material disclosure about the housing settlement turned all of that upside down, and as Mr. Ryback said, requires us to start from scratch. It will change and affect materially the five-year projection and the longer-term projections, and ideally, we certainly would have taken this to committees to discuss this, BG&amp;T and Finance would have been suitors, but we have a real sense of urgency here with the ad hoc committee scheduling, so not to lose momentum, lose the interest of the volunteers who have committed a lot of their time already to this process, and I'll use the word again, there's a real sense of urgency to get this report updated as quickly as possible and as accurately as possible, and it is our opinion and belief that Ross Haber can accomplish that.
Is Mr. Haber still using the 2,000, I think, with the 2,000 census? Rutgers study? Is that, he's using that as a basis?
The answer to that is yes. That's the only model that the state will accept. Whitehall &amp; Associates would also be using that same model.
That's the problem. That's really the issue. That's also bad data by the author's own admission, so I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Teig, I see what the.
If I can add some detail to that. Dr. Haber did indicate that he spoke to, and I forget the woman's name, Eileen, someone, she's a professor at Rutgers, who handles the Rutgers study, and he reached out to her specifically regarding our situation because he's concerned regarding the affordable housing and the numbers that will be used for those projections, and Rutgers indicated to him that the Monroe data that is included in the Rutgers study should not be referenced for the study that he is going to do. So, he is going to be doing legwork with John Riggs to determine affordable housing that currently exists, and try and extrapolate from that what the new numbers should be, and in essence, do a new customized Rutgers study that will be reflective of what is in Monroe and what is projected for Monroe. So, it's a little bit different. He's not going to strictly follow the Rutgers model, based on his conversations with those facilities.
Because the model's obsolete.
Absolutely, and Rutgers has indicated that to him and told him not to follow their model. Therefore, he has to do the legwork specific to Monroe.
Just one more comment. Maybe we can, we can talk to our state representatives in this area and ask them, and I think I've said this before, maybe we can write a letter asking them to either update the Rutgers study or allow other studies to be used to extrapolate enrollment and projections, because by the author's own admission, I think, Mr. Ryback, you were there at Rutgers with me in the same room, and he said that it's an obsolete study.
Yes. I couldn't agree more.
And so was Ms. Greenstein. She was in the room also, so she has firsthand knowledge of the study being obsolete. That's the very least they can do at the state level, and allow us to get accurate information to help our students.
I have no problem with that. I will do what I can to make sure that message gets conveyed. Anybody else? I guess we could vote on the.
Demographic study, Ross Haber, resolution moved by Mr. Ryback, seconded by Mrs. Koloponowicz. Ms. Arminio?
I reluctantly say yes, if you think it's that important.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nusslein?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
No.
And Mr. Rutzke?
Yes.
Support President, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Good discussion, good points being raised. Okay, we're ready for any other Board of Education business. Any board member? Mr. Nusslein?
Just going back to the budget and the state aid situation, just to kind of show you how sorely underfunded we are, even with a $2 million increase, that's still going to be less than 5% of our budget. So, I mean, it's a sad reality that we have to be getting excited about covering 5% of our budget, but the one thing I do sometimes do in my spare time is I do actually go to other districts' websites and look at some of their meetings. It kind of tells you that I don't have much of a life, obviously, but it also shows that I don't think there's any state, whether they're getting 15%, 20%, or 25% of their budget from state aid. I didn't hear one person saying, other than they're not, than they're all underfunded. So, it's a tough fight, and I understand it, and all we can do is keep, you know, fighting that good fight.
Well, I'd just like to comment on that, that the budget that we just passed shows the seriousness and the understanding that the Finance Committee, and Mr. Gorski here also, in developing the budget demonstrated. We don't take it lightly, and we baked the right cake this time, and hopefully, we'll continue to do so. Any other board members? So, Minio?
Would it be appropriate now, or we can save it to the next meeting? I would like to ask, or have a resolution, or consider it a resolution, to ask as a shared service opportunity for a copy of the court case that was held, and I have the docket number, to give us all the.
Affordable housing?
Yes, so we would have that information firsthand.
Mr. Ryback?
Sure.
Can you do that?
I have actually worked with our board attorney on this matter. She and I contacted township. We asked for a copy of the settlement. We called on Wednesday. It settled on Thursday. I don't believe we need a resolution, but I will tell you that administratively, we will follow up on this, and we will get a copy of the settlement agreement and send it to the board with the superintendent's weekly confidential.
And may I just, for the public's sake, just say the docket number of this, because the public has a right to go to, actually, the courthouse and get this information. It was a, it was a compliance hearing for the Township of Monroe, County of Middlesex, for the township's housing element and fair share compliance plan for affordable housing period of 1987 to 2025. Docket number, capital M, capital I, capital D, dash, capital L, 3365, dash, 15, and that would be available as a public record. I do have copies, if someone requests them, I'll. I do have copies, if someone requests them, I'll be happy to give them to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. Anyone else?
Seeing no one, we can move to our second public forum. This is where the public can address questions, items not necessarily on, on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to do so. If you come up to the podium, just state your name and address. Mr. Poy.
Good evening, Doug Poy for Tamarack Road. I've got five different items, so I'll try to see what I can do. The first one is this demographic study. Unless the, the settlement indicates the number of units and how many bedrooms are in those units, and where those units are going to be built, and until a builder indicates how many market value houses he's gonna be building and where they're gonna be and what size they're gonna be, et cetera, I don't see how the demographer is going to be able to produce anything. So I, I personally see that this calling for this demographer's report seems to be premature, but I haven't seen the, the court settlement. But the demographer has always worked with what is on the books in terms of how many houses and how many bedrooms are gonna be in those houses, and I can't imagine that we have that information at this time. So it's just a point I'd like to raise about that. Secondly, some time ago, the Board of Education approved an expenditure for a study, an outside, excuse me, an outside group to come in, come in and study our special ed, it's my voice.
Would you like some water?
A special ed program, I can get that right there. To study the special ed program, and I know we did an in-house study as well as a, an outside firm, but I have not yet heard the results of that study presented at a board meeting, so I hope that, that is forthcoming. The third item, this passed Sunday in the Star Ledger, front page was a big story about median salaries of teachers in the state of New Jersey. So I went to the Taxpayers Guide to check on the median salaries of all the districts in, in Monmouth County, and I understand that it's already been shared with the board, but it has not yet been shared with the public, and I think it's important for the public to know that in terms of the 23 districts in Middlesex County, Monroe is the third lowest paying in terms of the median teacher salary. So I'm sharing that with the public because the newspaper did not indicate that information. And the next item, Mr. Kaufman had mentioned an online course that would be approved, but there was no mention of what the cost of that would be. I, I would think, unless this is being totally done in-house, that there's some kind of cost involved in that. And personally, all the studies that I have ever read, and anything that I've read in any of the educational journals or newspapers, questions the efficacy of online courses. They have always found that the students do not do as well, they do not retain the material as well, in an online course as they do in an actual interactive course with an active teacher. And-
Give it a few more seconds, Teig.
Okay, fifth item. The U.S. News and World Report released their rankings of high schools, again, and I see we still have our sign advertising us as having a silver award. When I looked it up on the internet, I found that Monroe has no ranking, but it also has Monroe listed as having two high schools. So I pursued that, and I found out that not only is the Monroe Township of Middlesex County, the, our results are being somehow pooled together with the Monroe Township, which is down in Gloucester County, I believe it is. I don't know why that didn't, why that happened this year, but didn't happen in previous years, but I felt that it was a disservice and I hope that someone in the administration is looking into that so they can sort that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poy. Appreciate your comments and we will be checking into that. Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Mr. Roach.
Governor Roach, A Team Yorkfield Boulevard. I guess what I've heard here tonight is I, I think that the state's giving us now, they used to just give us $2 million, are they giving us $4 million now towards our budget cost, or is it still just the $2 million?
It's approximately $4 million.
Several years ago, I, I mentioned this, discussed this with the administration, I was at a meeting and, you know, when the, you know, the budget was still always a problem and I, and mandates had always been a problem. The administration had always talked about the cost of mandates, how much it's costing us. And so I asked Governor Christie at that point in time, suppose we don't do the mandates? What will happen? He says, geez, I don't know, I don't think anything will happen. And he, he set up a subsequent meeting for someone, with some of his state administrators, and they never came with a clear answer as to what would happen if we didn't do some of these mandates. And I talked to the, some of the administrators at one of the meetings and board people, and they said it would be too difficult to figure out, you know, some of these mandates are involved with other programs and things of this nature. But I, I think with our tough times here, it would be worthwhile to see if there's some way to determine if we can find out how much these mandates that the state is forcing on us that we may feel is, are not necessary. And to the extent we can do that, say, hey, we're not gonna do them, and, and, you know, use that money, there's funds for other, other things that we feel are more important. It's just a thought, I think you, I would appreciate it if you would give some consideration to figure out how you can do it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one, we can move to our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go with the closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws, 1975 NJSA 10, colon, 4, dash, 6 through 10, colon, 4, dash, 21, to discuss the following subjects: Personnel matter. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
So.
I have a second? Mr. Nostine? Any discussion? We could vote? All in favor?
Aye. I abstain.
Opposed? Stained, one? About how long you think?
No, I'm going in. I just-
About 15 minutes? We'll be back. Okay, we're still in session?
Yeah.
I'm ready for our third public forum, but I see no one from the public, so I'm assuming no one from the public wants to come to the podium. With that, let me state that the next scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, May 11th, 7 o'clock here in the high school. I'd also like to remind everyone about the May 9th Student Growth Advisory Committee at the middle school at 7 o'clock. We're up to adjournment, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.
Eight.
Motion carries.